Everybody, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular DeKalb City Council Meeting of January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Roll call, please.
Zisada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith? Perkins?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker? Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Seven Peasant?
Alright, now if everyone could stand, we will have Captain Hyvee lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shadow. Alright, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. Take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Zisada, seconded by Alderman Powell. Roll call, please. Both questions or comments? Sorry. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Alright, Agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. We have none. And now Agenda Item E, Public Participation. I'd like to call Janet Shear up. And as a reminder...
Do you want me to come all the way up here?
To the podium right there where there's a microphone. No problem. And just so everyone knows, each speaker has a maximum time of three minutes. I wish I could go longer, but people take advantage of it, so we have to restrict you to three minutes.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. Hi, my name's Janet Shear. I live at twelve eighty-nine Ryan Court, and I've been there for a little over a month. I moved in December. And I would like to bring to the attention of the city board the lack of stop signs to my street and others in the development. I have grandsons that would be driving soon next year, sixteen and eighteen, and feel that with stop signs on Larson Street, in which I just found out Larson is horseshoe-shaped. It's Larson up to here, and then on the other side it's called Mason. A U.S. A. Board could alleviate a great safety issue. I know that stop signs are required at intersections where engineering judgment indicates that they are needed. I have already accounted a driver coming out of Mason quite fast that did not yield or stop, and I was coming down Knolls Avenue South. Luckily, I was able to stop. I know a need must be shown and clearly. I feel that there is a need on Larson Street. I know that traffic volume, speed, visibility, and accident history are determining factors. I also know what I experienced that warrants the city council, who is legally obligated to install a stop sign to comply with MUTCD manual, which is the traffic manual. There are also no yield signs on Larson Street. Our street of Larson goes into the main street of Knolls. I am asking you to consider putting a stop sign on Larson Street. This would entail two stop signs. Thank you for considering this before something major happens, concerned citizen. Thank you all.
Hey, Jeanette, really quick. You said there's no yield signs on Larson or Mason as well, right?
No, none. No stop signs or yield signs.
Some of the older neighborhoods about yield signs were not ever put in.
Yeah.
So we're trying to figure out what that looks like. I'll follow up with our city engineer and Alderman Verbic, who's your alderman, or myself. We'll get back to you and see if we can find a little more information for you.
I tried to give you a map of it. It's just Larson here, but around the end, it was the one on Mason that almost hit me. Just comes right out. There's no stop signs on either street.
Well, thanks, Jeanette.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
City manager.
Just wanted to let you know that we met here tonight, and I got her contact information.
Awesome.
And I've already talked to the city engineer, and they'll connect tomorrow if that helps.
Perfect. That's great. Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Have a wonderful night. Alright, then I have Alicia Iverson. Hey, come on up. And again, Alicia, you have three minutes.
Okay. I will try to be under three minutes.
No worries.
Alright, hello, everyone. I'm the one who dropped off that little packet about the police on the buses earlier today. Everything is in order with my speech, so it should be easy to follow along and highlight it. I'll just get right into it. My name is Alicia Iverson. I'm the one that dropped off the little packet. I should have did a different intro. I'm sorry. The packets are for your own edification, and the relevant parts are highlighted in the same order as my speech. I read in an article that the police patrols were starting on buses even though there's not a significant amount of crime or disturbances on the buses. According to the two thousand and twenty-five city budget, fifty thousand dollars will be spent on the police to be on voluntary overtime for up to ten hours a week in order to be on set patrols of the buses. The fifty thousand dollars is coming from Federal Transit Authority Grant five-three-zero-seven, which I'll just refer to as FTA Grant five-three-zero-seven from now on. I'm aware that the city... I'm also aware that the city doesn't spend the zero point seventy-five percent to one percent of that FTA grant on a security project. You could risk losing the grant. Obviously, nobody wants that because it runs the whole transit bus. Sorry.
Fine, you're doing great.
I'm asking the city council to instead spend that fifty thousand dollars on an alternative security project listed in the FTA five-three-zero-seven grant guidance. For example, I think focusing on lighting the bus stops would be an excellent idea. You could install the lighting with the new bus shelters you already have planned for this year. If that doesn't float your boat, other suggested security projects listed in the grant guidance include cybersecurity, emergency telephones, installation of cameras, and other technology or hardware to report a crime. I genuinely don't think having police patrols on the buses will ingratiate the police to the community. I think it will scare the community. Please consider lighting the bus stops instead. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Nice job. Alright, I know I have a few more here. If Alicia covered it or someone else covered it, you're not obligated to come up and speak and just let me know to pass. But the next person I have is Parker. I can't read the last name. S. L. R.?
It's okay.
What is it?
Osselborn.
Osselborn, okay. We have similar handwriting.
I normally write in cursive, so my print is awful. Yeah, basically, all I have to say is I want to second what Alicia said, and also I would love to see more... I would also love to see more security at the bus stops, and I think that the money could just go other places other than a cop sitting on the bus when there's not that many people that ride the buses anyways. Thank you.
Thank you. How about Chris Falco?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chris Davis Falco. I've lived in DeKalb County most of my life. I'm here today to express my concern about the public-sized plan to put police officers on public transit lines. I've been reading about the plan to use up to fifty thousand dollars of federal funds to pay police officers on a voluntary overtime basis to ride the buses. My concerns with some of those funds, I wanted to bring to the council. I understand, first of all, that budgeting is hard and difficult and thankless, so thank you guys for everything you do. I think we can use these funds in a better way. The city manager has acknowledged that, the transit manager, excuse me, has acknowledged that there's not really any significant crime or disturbances currently on the buses, and that since we are not experiencing that, I feel that why are we allocating those resources to police to work overtime and ride the buses? I think there's much more useful things to use, such as expanding routes or times or services, not really police overtime for something that isn't a problem that's existing in the current. I would like to remind everybody that for a lot of people, interacting with police officers in this manner can be intimidating, cause anxiety. I don't necessarily think that this type of community outreach, as it's been called, is effective. I think it causes more problems than maybe it's worth. I feel that having officers on the buses when there's not currently a problem may start to cause an issue where people believe that the buses are unsafe. Let's see. I think there's better ways to use those funds, such as de-escalation training, maybe having transit ambassadors instead of just having random cops on the buses. I also feel that the buses are a public space where people will sometimes feel like they're surveilled. I think both of our goals is to make the bus lines safer, and I appreciate that. Thank you for hearing me.
Appreciate it. And then Cody Cahill, are you of the same topic? Yep, come on up.
Hey, y'all. I'd like to echo the sentiments of these past lovely folks. Hey, my name is Cody Cahill. I've spent almost my whole life in this county. I'm a junior at NIU. I do not own a car, and I'm physically disabled. This comment is in regard to the fifty thousand dollar Federal Transit Authority Grant that is, as elected by the city, must be spent towards transit security. The city has additionally elected to, instead of taking any of the suggestions actually outlined within the grant, go new route and use that funding to put police presence on city buses. DeKalb PD reports plans to use patrol buses on a voluntary basis, using voluntary overtime. Mike Newenkirchen, the transit manager, said himself that the transit program does not presently see significant reports of crime or disturbances on transit routes, so why are we doing this? I rely on the bus system to get me to work, school, the stores, and the train station. That's like my whole life. I use the bus multiple times a day, every day for the past few years, and countless times I've been left stranded because of various issues with the buses. Each time, I was eventually able to call upon a friend or family member for a ride, but not without hours wasted waiting around, often late at night in the cold or the rain, with no shelter, nowhere to sit, no nearby life sources, and absolutely no safety in case my phone died. Almost every local bus stop could seriously use better lighting, emergency telephones, and/or other security technology. Just for example, the Elburn stop is pretty infamous for this. It has no amenities. It's forever away from everything, and many people I know, myself included, are frequently left there high and dry. Once last semester, I got off the train at eight P. M. and the bus back to campus never showed, and my emergency ride couldn't pick me up till one in the morning. That sucked. To emphasize, I never worry about crime actually on the buses. It simply does not happen to any extent that justifies a heightened police presence. To do so, I feel would be a misuse of federal funds, better spent elsewhere. I'm far from the only disabled student at NIU. So many of us in the area, for one reason or another, have no alternative to public transport, excuse me. But there's no fail-safe, which is particularly obvious when the system kind of fails a lot. As it stands, the state of DeKalb Transit has way too many glaring flaws for this special money to be directed kind of anywhere else. Putting it towards extra policing when there's been no statistical indication that such resort is needed is just financially irresponsible. Why are we trying to get ahead of a problem that we feel like we might have later on to fix the problems we have right now? Thank y'all.
Thank you. So what I'm gonna do is have Mike Newenkirchen talk a little bit more about this, just from an educational standpoint, when Agenda Item comes up on the buses that we're gonna pass. So if you all can just stick around for a little bit, we'll cover that, and he'll be able to share some insight there. And thanks for coming out. This is awesome. It's great. This is public participation at its finest, so really appreciate it. Alright, moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. We have none. Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Number two, Counts Payable and Payroll through January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of three million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty cents. And number three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA Report, December two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zisada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Consent Agenda has been passed. Oh, I almost forgot, too. Alderman Smith let me know well in advance he wasn't gonna be able to make it here tonight. Sorry, I forgot to let everyone know that. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and call this public hearing order at six thirteen. This is a public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant, five-year consolidated plan, two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-nine, and annual action plan, one-year use of funds, for program year thirty-two, April first, two thousand and twenty-five through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Is there anyone here from the public that wanted to speak on this public hearing? Alright, city manager, I know we've got Agenda Item, but I'm supposed to ask, any comments?
Yeah, just to mention that the public hearing was about a federally funded program called the Community Development Block Grant, and it requires a five-year plan and then five individual annual plans. The current five-year plan expires at the... expired at the end of December twenty-four, so what's before you tonight are recommendations from city staff for the objectives of the new five-year plan, and then also attached to that is a one-year plan, and there are some numbers that are attached to that. As you said, Mayor, this will come up on the agenda a little bit later as an action item.
Excellent. Council, any questions? And again, we will cover this a little bit later. Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close this public hearing at six fourteen. Alright, moving on to Agenda Item I. Soon as I can turn page to it. Considerations, we have none. So Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-nine, authorizing human services funding agreements in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with local social service agencies beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little of political history. This program has been in existence since nineteen ninety-eight, and prior to that, in the seventies and through much of the eighties, there was more federal block grant money available. Revenue share... federal revenue sharing was sort of the umbrella, and that diminished and then disappeared as a result of some pretty severe recessions in the eighties. There were congressional efforts to get something going again, and it, as you know, we just had a public hearing on the CDBG program, which is a federal program. But in the lieu of any state or federal program, the city council, back in nineteen ninety-eight, decided, let's take some money out of our general fund every year, the General Operating Fund, and designate it for local social service agencies that are performing very necessary and essential services. And in my background, I've identified the general priorities, those being that we are helping agencies and others to meet basic emergency needs, such as food, clothing, and shelter. That is number one, obviously. Then that there are some services that are preventative in nature and promote the highest degree of self-support, self-care, and self-help. And finally, that the services that you fund with grants every year seek to enhance the quality of life of persons whose basic needs are already met, but possibly struggling to establish themselves in our community. So in a very general way, those are the three categories. And without going much more into the background of this, the grants have grown from about a hundred and eighty-four thousand up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand now, and in the current FY twenty-five budget, it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Every year, as so often the case with grant programs, we get applications with dollars that are sought that are higher than the dollars that are available. And there are some charts in your background tonight that indicate last year's level of funding, if the agency was funded last year, what's proposed for this year. One person doesn't make this decision. There's a panel of people that review this every year. And there are a number of things that come into play here. On very rare occasions, sometimes an agency hasn't expended all the money or hasn't provided the quarterly reports, which are necessary to show that the money's being used for the purposes that were defined in the application sometimes the year before. But on the whole, the people who are working for the agencies that are shown in your charts here have been providing those quarterly reports. Jennifer Yocum is our Community Development Coordinator, coordinator, excuse me. She's in the audience, so if I stumble, she will answer questions. What's proposed is before you, and we are inviting, at this point, this is a resolution, to approve a variety of contracts with each one of these service agencies. That's been done in omnibus fashion for some years now, but we're hoping the council will have some reaction, and we recommend what's on the agenda, but welcome any thoughts and questions.
Council, comments, questions? Alderman Verbic.
How do we grow this amount? The need greatly exceeds what we see here and more. So we've been very responsible with taxpayer dollars, holding them in check. How can we continue to hold taxes in check while doing more for the need that exists here in DeKalb? That's...
That's a great question.
Is it an amount that we can match it to EAV growth there? How do we match that growth? Because the need grows.
It's an annual balancing act, as you know, the budget process, which goes on for really six months, and there are different directives that basically come from the council, attending essentials, our first responder departments, for instance. But we have other departments that perform services that you're very familiar with. So as we go through a number of workshops that we do with the Finance Advisory Committee, there are Agenda Items that come up from time to time that have relevance to the budget, and then we go through every, literally every page of the budget. If the council said this year as a body, the direction to you, city manager, is we want to do everything we did last year and this much more, then that is a pretty clear directive, and we do that much more. I can tell you, if it was... it's two hundred and twenty-five now, and the number of the... if you add up all the requests and proposals, it was over four hundred thousand dollars. If we went to two fifty, two seventy-five, three hundred, you might have five hundred, six hundred. So I... there's no way to predict, but often that is the case. People... if the word gets out, there's more. We have... we are also trying to balance those agencies that have for a long time been providing that first priority of essential services, food, clothing, and housing, and they have been staying sort of in a slot, and there's only so much we've been able then to add in the way of new startups, people who have some new ideas and are looking to do some new things in our community. So the short answer is, give us a number, or we'll give you a number, and one way or another, we'll have an allocation in the budget, and we'd rather have your number for that.
Yeah. And, you know, maybe two fifty is the next step, right? I'm not sure. Can't really say. But I just see these dollars going far. These dollars, these organizations, the work that everyone is doing is making great use of those dollars. In the grand scheme of things, yes, it's a lot of money, but look what it gets accomplished.
I like the idea a lot. If you'd be open, maybe you, myself, and the city manager, we could sit down and just talk a little bit about a dollar amount, but then also, in some ways, I feel like putting some guardrails on it, where rather than expanding the amount of organizations we contribute to, that might be a component of it, but making sure the organizations that have longstanding been dependent on these revenue sources, yet we've frozen them year over year, which as we know, the cost of a dollar is getting less and less. We could focus on making sure that there's a little bump for everybody in the funding that they might have received the previous year to this year. If that sounds good to you.
Great.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Alderman Larson.
This is kind of a little off to the side, because this money is from our budget, but we get our money from state and federal as well. So like, gas taxes that are collected here when people buy gas, it actually goes to Springfield, and they send it back to us based on our population. So I'm gonna say this, and if I'm re-elected for the next four years, when census comes, everybody needs to fill those out. It doesn't just change the little green sign coming into the city. That determines the money that we get for being able to give back on our budget, on all these other people. They probably are getting federal and state grants, and it depends on the population of the city. So it's not just, we're not trying to, in your business, find out who you are, what you are. We just need to know you are here so that we can get as many benefits from our state and federal government, and then we can turn around and have more money to turn around and give back.
Great point.
So you'll hear that a lot from me in the future. Just, I know it's like five years away, and that'll be like next week, so fill them out.
Because we did lose four thousand in our population.
We lost four thousand.
But when I drive around, I don't see empty houses and empty apartments, so I really doubt we lost four thousand people. Yeah.
They just didn't fill them out.
Yep. Any other comments or questions, council? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Resolution two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-nine passes. That's an awesome one. Then, moving on to number two, Resolution two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-one-zero, authorizing a supplemental human services grant to the Voluntary Action Center in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager.
This council has always been receptive to special requests that are outside of the annual human services grant program or CDBG program, and a more... one of the more recent ones was the fifty thousand dollars you created as an emergency fund for migrant families that might find themselves here, dropped off by a bus in the middle of the night, no place to go, and no shelter, no food, and so forth. And that was about a year ago, this time, that that was established. Nate Kloster, who's the CEO of the Voluntary Action Center, came to us just before the holidays and explained, and I'm sure he would rather have done other things that day, but he explained very vividly an issue that has come up over the last year and some, which is a shortfall in the agency's budget cycle because of grants that had not been processed or grants that had not been extended. And VAC has many programs and is involved in transportation, as you know, but maybe what most people who have lived here for a while know about VAC is that it has this program called Meals on Wheels, and it's had this since nineteen eighty-seven. And it's a defining program. It serves meals to mostly seniors, although persons who are physically challenged as well can't get out and about, so they... it's... there's a kitchen, there's people involved in preparing the food and putting it into hot or cold carriers, and then volunteers from our community, sometimes service clubs, sometimes anybody who wants to show up and donate so many days, you know, an hour or two a week over a period of months or even years, and some have been doing it for decades. And that provides that necessary amount of nutrition for a family or a person, a shut-in and so forth. Very popular program, essential to a lot of people. I mean, I've done it many, many years. People are waiting at the door, very, very pleasant, very kind, but their wait... that food, that's their food for that noon meal, sometimes maybe more. So the shortfall was considerable. We were asked if we could come up with forty thousand dollars. This is a one-time support grant. Coincidentally, happily, in this case, we had a little over that. That was... we're just processing the last of the ARPA funds, and we need to spend that out since persons who are receiving these meals are low to moderate income persons or persons of those income levels. They fit the ARPA requirements. They are also scattered, but at this point, those requirements are scattered. Now they can apply to scattered sites, not just those with a certain census location where there seems to be a high volume of persons who are at or below, say, the poverty level. So I recommend that we use our ARPA funds, which is Fund one-ten, pay that full forty thousand dollar one-time grant from that, and help VAC out and underwrite this program.
I don't know if anyone's done Meals on Wheels for the council. Yeah, I mean, my gosh, I've done it a couple times, and you go door-to-door, and Bill's absolutely right. I mean, the elderly, and you can tell, this is a big moment of that day. Disabled veterans that I've come across, it's heart-wrenching at times, and then understand that there's a shortfall that could possibly impact this need that so many in the community absolutely depend on. And if I remember it, VAC doesn't... they don't question. They don't... And if I remember it, VAC doesn't, they don't question, they don't, I mean, there's a little bit of screening, but it's, it's an honor-based system. And when I was told that, I was a little skeptical going into it. And what I realized is every single solitary meal I delivered was someone that desperately needed it. So that's why I agreed to put this on the agenda with Bill. I think it's an important one and I hope council would support it. So questions or comments, council? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Sisada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2025-010 passes. Excellent. Thanks, council. Thanks for coming out today, Nate. Appreciate you and you don't have to stick around, sir. Number three, resolution 2025-011, approving the Community Development Block Grant Five-Year Consolidation Plan, 2025 through 2029, and Annual Action Plan, One-Year Use of Funds for Program Year 32, April 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2026. Can I have a motion to bring this one to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sisada, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. And I'm sure in your mind's eye, you have a very clear idea of what the objectives were from the five-year action plan. So with that as backdrop, mostly what I need you to focus on here is that annual action plan for this year, which is our 32nd program year with this particular program. And there are four categories, there's a possibility of five. We have four categories. The one category that was not identified here is, is a single family, so detached single-family rehab dollars that could be used. It's because we have been seeing a declining CDBG allocation every year for the last four years. We were over 400,000, we're down, the estimate this year is 352,979. So we're down 75,000 roughly from when I started here in 2019. That's not a good trend. Really should go. So some public facility allocation here, if you look at page nine in your background, the 211,788, we have done in the Antiguo to the north area or the near north areas. There have been public improvements that have done, been done there. Some of the cul-de-sacs that are in there, the walkable neighborhood approach that we've been trying to implement there in collaboration with the, with not only the Greek community there, but those families that are living in large apartment complexes there. Public services, very limited amount, 52,947. We are obviously addressing public services in other ways, but then there's a breakdown of where that 52,947 comes from. Hope Haven, Safe Passage, the Children's Learning Center, Fox Valley, older adults, elder care services and the Voluntary Action Center. All have small pieces of that, but reasonable sized pieces. And then some housing rehab, much of this has to do with, you know, the furnace that is given out, the roof that's leaking like a sieve and essential stuff, not, I'd love to paint my house green this year, none of that would qualify. And then administration, this is how with the federal support, we pay for a good part of Jennifer Yocum's salary year in and year out. So it comes to 352,979. That's what's before you in this resolution. We recommend your approval.
Council, questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Sisada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2025-011 passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to number four, resolution 2025-012, authorizing approval of a master contract and addendum to the master contract between the State of Washington and Gillig LLC with additional State of Illinois clauses permitting the City of DeKalb to purchase e-gen flex hybrid and diesel buses in an amount not to exceed $4,118,400. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. Do we want to address the public comment right now first?
Yeah, I think Mike also needs to go, so maybe we can bring Mike up.
Come on up, Mike.
Mike's our transit manager.
Transit manager, Mike Nolan Kirchen, yep.
Thank you. I guess to address the, the concerns from the, the public here, I mean, this was not intended, is not intended to be a punitive or anything along those lines. There's two elements that we have to address, as mentioned in the, the articles, that we have to stipulate about 1% of our, of our federal funds to address safety and security elements. And so when we're looking at like a $3 million grant, that's a large element. So there's elements that we do. We've got cameras on the buses and, you know, other measures that, that our contractor, transdev takes. But what we thought was, would be a, you know, a way to further help with that security arrangement was to work with the DeKalb Police Department, have a cop ride the bus a few hours here and there. It's not, you know, an issue of where we're having multiple officers on every bus at every, you know, every time of the day. It's really to get the officers to some familiarization with how the system works because they do respond to issues, you know, throughout the course of the, the shift. Give them familiarization with the service, give our drivers familiarity, familiarization with the police officers that they're contacting for emergency issues. And that's not necessarily crime related. I mean, sometimes it can be accidents, a lot of times it's slip and falls, that type of thing. And by the way, our, our fire department also does a great job of responding to those issues as well. So it was a partnership thing. The other element is that there is a recent federal directive established back in September 2024 of having proactive steps to take to address assaults on transit workers. So again, this was a proactive plan. It wasn't intended to be, you know, a, you know, you know, any sort of retribution or, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, think of the word off the top, may I forgive me, but it's, it's not intended of a punitive thing. It's, it's a proactive partnership thing with our police department. I think the, the third point I would make is that this is not a new thing. If you look at transit authorities throughout the nation, there'll be a, you know, there's transit police. There's partnerships that local transit agencies will make with police departments, which is what I modeled this, this program off of. Again, it's more of a familiarization, proactive type of approach. It's not, you know, intended to be a, an omnipresent sort of thing. And I'm not here to address, you know, policing. You know, the chief birds certainly can do a wonderful job of doing that, but that was the impetus for what we're trying to do with this. And, you know, having that relationship between the police department and transit, we thought was going to be a good thing. My understanding, there's already been a couple of those ride-along shifts that have happened. Positive, you know, news, I think with that. And we're looking forward to seeing this continue. It's, you know, that, that's what this was intended to be.
Mike, are the, are the funds restricted to it has to be police on buses? Is that a component?
No, it can be, it can be any number of measures, but that was a measure that, that we could put into place.
Okay.
Counsel?
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
So some of the, the residents who reached out, they had said certain things, that great idea, but then after being up here and realizing the cost of some things, so just like what would a new enclosure cost? Like a new bus stop.
With lighting.
Right. Well, and that's, that's.
Just to give them some idea, because wouldn't that be well above the money that?
That would cost about 50 or 60,000 for each new enclosure.
Okay.
Which we do have some money in the budget for this year.
Okay.
There's a couple of elements that come into play as well, where we're operationally rich, but, but capital poor, if that makes sense. So I'm coming before you tonight to talk about buses. We'll receive operating funds from the state and the federal government to operate our fleet, but developing that capitalization for things like bus shelters. And by the way, our system, I've said this before, our system is only about really, when you think about it, we're only about four to five years old. Prior to this, VAC was running a community-based transit program that was really demand-response based. Northern Illinois University was operating a completely separate program. We brought these, these systems together back in 2019 and the types of things that we've got going on tonight where there's money for transit facility and a few, and we'll be talking about in a couple upcoming meetings, money for buses. This grant I wrote back in, gosh, I started in March 2022. I think I wrote this grant in May or June. So it's taken this long to get to this point. But that's the lead time that we work with when we're playing with state and federal funds because of all the procurement processes, the concurrences you have to sign off on, environmental reviews on site studies and things like that. So what we're doing is we're working on bringing capital funds into play as well. And like I said, we've got some money plugged in for shelters and there's a lot we need to do with shelters. I mean, I know, you know, you've brought up Alderman Sisada, that, you know, we'd like to see more. And yeah, I think I mentioned a couple of meetings ago that we'd be looking at like, if we were to take all 220 bus stops, it would be like around $14 million. But we have to keep, we have to chip away at that a little bit at a time. And so that's where we're at with this. In general though, with this, this question of police and the buses, that's where this came from. Again, it wasn't intended to be like, you know, from my perspective, like, hey, you know, we need to put the hammer down on people or anything like that. Our police are, you know, responding to issues on buses occasionally here and there. We provided a million passenger trips last year, a million passenger trips in this community. So, you know, ridership has been increasing, that's nearly double of two years ago. So these are the measures that we're taking right now to address this.
Alderman Sisada.
So $50,000 will give us how many police hours on buses?
My rough estimate will be about 500 hours through the course of year.
Okay. And I, I do want to note too, because I am so obsessed with how terrible it is for people to not have anywhere to sit at the bus stops, that we don't necessarily have to have shelters there and we have service agencies in the community. And I think we should look at amending our contract with our shelter company, who I believe is the one really creating the barrier between us having more seats at bus stops. I think we can have benches funded by images on the benches or we can just have benches funded by service organizations in our community. Our service organizations are eager to have projects like this. That could be great. And I mean, as they said, you know, I, I do wonder if you could carve up this 50K and maybe put a little bit more toward some lighting at bus stops, because it is really scary, especially in the dark when people have nowhere to sit on the side of the road in the snow.
So. The issue, the issue is not that $55,000 that we're doing for policing. I mean, that's, you know, the system is funded to about 11.5 million this year. So yes, I mean, there are things that we are doing. The issue is, again, goes back to that operational versus, versus capital costs, you know. But again, I agree with you 100%. I mean, I don't like it when you're driving down the street and you see someone standing there when it's zero degrees, waiting for a bus to come. You know, I would love to see more shelters up, you know? That's something we have to chip away at and we will, but it's, you know, it's just going to have to take time and it's a different funding source to be chasing after.
And I would encourage, I mean, the idea of Kiwanis or Rotary doing the bus stops, that, I think that's our responsibility is individually to reach out to those organizations and educate them on the need and see if we can get them to champion.
I had some reach out who wanted to do it and I was told that they couldn't before. So I mean, certainly something to revisit now.
So we can't have a Rotary club put in a bench at a bus stop?
The issue becomes we'd have to do some engineering, you have to do ADA cuts, you have to, like, whenever you do those improvements, that's where it becomes. It's not just about, hey, we're going to.
Oh, I totally get it.
It's like building code, anything else, you go and do improvements on something, you may have to bring something up to code. That's kind of where we're at.
But ultimately, they could come up with the funds to make it happen.
Look, I mean, that's, that's, you know, that is a possibility, but that is also something to be aware of. It's not just a matter of, hey, we can just put these down.
Well, that's why it's so darn expensive.
Exactly.
Yeah, meaning by all the state and federal guidelines.
Engineering, there's things like that involved. One simple matter, like if, I don't receive a lot of capital funds specifically from the state unless it's for a project like software buses or something like that. So we can't just, you know, hey, we're going to take that money and put it towards a shelter. It has to be something that's specific to a grant that we're going to request. No. Anytime that we do a, something like a bus shelter, we have to request what's called a NEPA, National Environmental Protection Act review, just on this ground, you know? So what I actually was doing this year to expedite that process, we've, we set aside some local funds so we can at least get a few shelters up and not have to walk through like a year's worth of reviews from, you know, a federal, you know, reviewer on, hey, we're trying to put up a bus shelter at a.
But to, to simplify it down to, if Rotary wants to pay $50,000, I'm just using that number, $20,000 for, or $10,000 if it's a bench. We would come up with what the cost would be if they raised the money. It can happen.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, like I said, we would just have to address ADA standards.
Of course, all that, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, Alderman Walker.
Hey, so basically, let's just keep the main thing, the main thing. It's not about police harassing people on bus, on bus stops or buses. It's just about a loophole, not even a loophole, but you need it for security and safety and that's the way to get the grant. So we need the money and that's the way we can play it. And putting police on buses is what, you know, it equates to. I don't see anything matter with it. I support it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I would, since these fine young people came out with great ideas, I would challenge you to think about, is there anything else? The lighting that they're talking about or?
Yeah.
Anything else we need to make it safe? I, I would love for you to go back and, and look at that. I'm fully in support of.
Our shelters need to be lighted and they're, they weren't designed that way.
Yep.
So we've worked with the company on like, hey, can you do something with it? But after this conversation?
Yeah, please do.
Absolutely.
Because I don't want their voice to feel like it was unheard.
And I, and that's not, I totally understand.
Yeah.
You know, we, we engage with the public every day on concerns.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, and thanks to the assistant city manager, you know, we sat down and talked and he kind of engaged me on some things about the police. And I think that'd be a good way where the public and the, you know, police could, you know, make good relationships because I'm the first one to always down the police and I get it. But, you know, people always say, you know, we need to be more, you know, pre, you know, proactive instead of reactive. And, you know, if it does go there, then we're there, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I stand with you.
Thank you.
All right, let's talk four buses.
Okay. Actually, six buses.
If council's good on that topic, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Now the agenda item.
Um, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess city manager might want to pick it off.
I'll take that, please.
All right.
Thank you. So you're familiar with the Rebuild Illinois Capital Grant Program? It has funded grants that cover many municipal concerns. In this particular case, funds have been appropriated to provide capital grants. Mike said we're short on capital. We do have good support from the federal government on operating funding. So the, the capital from the Illinois Grant Program has, has come up with about $4,120,000 worth, worth of funding for fixed route buses. These are the heavy-duty buses. We've had some council suggestions over the last couple of years that we ought to, where possible, even knowing that they're, in some cases have, again, is, is more expensive than the standard diesel buses, to look at hybrids. And there are hybrids in the marketplace now, so we did that. What's before you tonight specifically is the funding that is broken down on, on page 10 of your background. Five of the low floor, which helps with access transit diesel buses and one also low-floor hybrid bus. And the combined total of that is just under the allocation. It's a little over $4 million. So as I mentioned, the, the costs now for the hybrid are 365,000 plus over, per, per bus, more than the diesel buses. You should be aware of that as you're considering this particular item.
Do you have an idea on the savings of a hybrid compared to?
As a matter of fact.
That's a ton of money.
Point that you should ask.
Yeah.
Thanks to the mayor and to Alderman Perkins and to Susan Hauman, who is our finance director. Susan, can I even hear her? Take him out. We did kind of a rough net present value calculation. And when you're looking at the, the fiscal impact of a bus or any other vehicle, you look at the capital piece, but also what it costs to operate it. And we're talking here about fuel primarily, fuel, buses use a lot of fuel. So with the base bus cost for, for diesel, and we looked at it over 10 years. So with the base bus cost for, for diesel, and we looked at it over ten years, roughly the, the lifespan of a, a big bus like this, the, the fuel for that six hundred and six thousand dollar bus over ten years is more than the cost of the bus, about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The fuel for the hybrid, which starts at nine hundred and seventy-two thousand and change, is just under six hundred thousand, so there's a lower fuel cost. But the net of all of this is that the diesel comes out about two hundred thousand dollars cheaper over ten years than the hybrid in terms of fuel cost and the basic capital Just the facts. So the, the recommendation here was to go five and one. Obviously, there's, there's other options you can do here, but we want to get six buses. There is a bigger strategic reason for this, not just replacing some buses, as you know. These would be owned by the city and we have a bus system right now, which the city operates, but most of the buses are owned by the provider. So it's hard to go to bid down the road to see what pricing we might get from some other providers when we don't have any buses to provide on day one, not many, we have some. So we've been trying incrementally, and, and I appreciate what Mike has done over recent years, to here and there where we have to replace buses, we're paying for them, we're finding a way to weave that into the annual allocation we get from the feds, putting money aside for our transit center construction and other operating costs and so forth, and still having gained a little bit on the bus front.
Alderman Perkins?
So I've got a, got a couple of questions, Mike, if you could, on this. How many buses total do we have now?
Well, as a, as a total transit system, we're, I believe, sitting around forty-five right now. That includes paratransit and fixed route buses. The.
How many fixed route, Mike?
The types of buses that we're using right now, these Gillics, there's twenty-one. So when we originally wrote this grant, we were basing this on peak service. So like, at that time, we were putting about eighteen vehicles out on peak service, now it's nineteen. But the idea is that we could capture about a third of our peak service fleet with these six vehicles.
So before I jump in with a question?
Yeah.
Thank you for, for the work.
Yeah.
You know, because this, this whole thing to me was really, here, if you look at our agenda, we've got a fifteen-page agenda and we've got about a page on this, on buses. But there's so much more here, if you start thinking about, you know, questions that typical citizen would ask. How do we have a bus fleet? Well, it's largely all through grants.
Yep.
Right? And, and even these buses right here are funded through grants that.
Yep.
That you did three years ago, two, three years ago.
Correct.
So that's, that's really all kind of interesting, you know, when you, when you dig into it. More specifically to this stuff right here, so what will the impact be on the maintenance area for, because one subtle nuance here is that we're basically going to shift.
Yep.
Our fleet.
Yep.
To some degree, at some juncture, from diesel to hybrid.
Right.
How will that impact? Are, are there hidden costs in there to support?
Yeah.
This, this transition?
Yeah. And, I mean, anecdotally, you know, there's.
Yeah, I'm just talking high level, you know.
Yeah. Um, you know, a, a hybrid vehicle, you know, it has the same kind of internal combustion engine type of, you know, thing that you're, but you also have the electric battery. Battery life has improved on these, so it used to be you'd have to do on the life of a bus, you'd have to do like a, a, a battery change like about halfway through like six, seven years. Now it'll take you to like twelve years, so that's a significant savings right there.
How much is battery?
I'm sorry?
What's a battery cost?
Oh my gosh, on these, it can be like a hundred thousand or something like that. I mean, don't quote me on that, but it's.
No, just directional.
It's significant.
You know, go to Farm Fleet and get it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I mean, it's, it's, so that's why with the, the electric buses, the pure electric buses, a battery change midlife is, is a big deal. But overall, you've got, you know, you're using the internal combustion engine, forgive me, I can't speak tonight, using that internal combustion engine less, so there's less wear and tear, and that's where a lot of that, you know, you run your vehicle, right? You know, and these diesels, they, you know, they run hard, you know. So anecdotally, you know, we believe that the maintenance costs are not going to be any significantly, perhaps even lower than a typical diesel would be. And I would say, you know, our peer agencies around us are all kind of moving to these types of vehicles, either hybrids or straight electric. So it's not like we are alone in this. You know, our, our point behind this was to give us a vehicle that we could see what is involved with running it, kind of dip our toe into it, and also address a couple of issues, the Citizen and Environmental Commission's recommendation to have less emissions type of vehicles on, you know, in the city fleet, as well as NIU's desire to see less full emissions vehicles on the road as putted there, you know. So we're trying to split the baby, if you will.
Mm-hmm. I was, I was just surprised at the, at the difference, you know. And so, to be clear, I, I do believe in global warming, I think it really is happening.
Yeah.
However, a three hundred thousand dollar difference is a huge difference to, to go greener, you know.
Right.
So I was surprised at that.
Yeah, well, again, amortized over the course of, you know, the life of a vehicle, it's not, you know, when I say it's not significant, it sounds like it is, but.
It's twenty K a year.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's also the fact that, you know, again, we possibly could see, you know, some maintenance savings over the course of time too, when you're doing some of those engine overhauls. I mean, you're looking at fifty, sixty thousand dollars on an engine overhaul on one of these vehicles, so it's not like that's cheap either. And then, again, you're also balancing out the fact that there has been community, a community, you know, desire, you know, expressed, you know, through this council to, you know, see emissions reduced. So, I mean, that's what we're balancing here. We would like to actually see more hybrids come in, because the other, the other element, I will say, is that there is a inverse factor between like the cost of, of diesel. So if it's sitting at four twenty-five versus like two forty-five, there'll be an inverse, you know, cost to the, to the detriment of the diesel bus, if that makes sense. But, you know, it's hard for us to calculate that right now, but, and we've seen that, we saw that two years ago. I mean, diesel was over five bucks a gallon, you know. So it's one of those things that we're balancing a couple of factors, but we thought that this was a very reasonable approach.
Alderman Zazada first?
Yeah, I, I just want to note too, like, that it's very easy to quantify the fuel cost, but I want us to also keep in mind that there are substantial health benefits to people who are breathing these fuels, probably to the bus drivers as well, and these are not as easily quantified, but I'm sure there's studies out there along with environmental equity. So I just want us to keep that in mind. The city that I first experienced that was doing the most hybrid buses, I just remember them going by, the sound was quieter, you know, so there's less sound pollution, and I, I could breathe when it came by. I wasn't like, oh God, hold my breath, you know. It was, it was just a really lovely experience. So there's a lot that goes into that besides just, you know, health benefits, environmental equity, and then just making the community nicer.
Alderman Larson?
I just have a question, because I know out in our farm, our diesel trucks and even our tractors, every year they come out, there's more regulations about emissions and, you know, you don't usually see a semi puffing out the black smoke. So are these new buses also having these new requirements on them that will reduce some of these emissions?
Not that I'm aware of, but what we're using here is, in our fleet, is ultra-low sulfur diesel. And so when you look at the emissions on the ultra-low sulfur diesel versus, you know, a lot, a lot of other types of fuels, I mean, so if you get behind one of our buses, and I've been in the yard, you know, you don't get that black smoke or anything like that. No, don't get me wrong, it's a big bus, you know, it's, it's running diesel, and you've got experience with that. But that, the ultra-low sulfur diesel actually is something that was required in Europe, you know, which has a lot higher emission standards than the United States does, so that's what we're using here and that helps to address that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Others? Yeah, for myself, I like the idea of five diesel, but it's time we dip our toe in the water and take a look at this, get used to it. This is the future, there's no doubt about it, so we're just going down the path of an inevitable outcome. I feel the additional cost piece, but we don't know what over ten years is going to look like, and if it's twenty K a, a year, diesel skyrockets. Now it's, maybe it's ten K a year, but I think it's important that we start getting a feel for the EV market when it comes to our mass public transportation. I've been in other communities too, in San Francisco at a college there, where they had all electric buses, and the noise thing was, I mean, it was incredible how just quiet everything was.
And that, that would be the intention.
Yeah.
Especially around the campus, where we'd be able to put, like, the way that these are designed is you can actually run.
Oh, that's cool, yeah.
You know, run them on electric generation in that area, so you can actually create a geofence.
Yep.
In those really denser areas.
Yeah. So, or this initiative. Hearing none other comments or questions, I guess it's time for roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Sazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Furbick?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed?
Resolution two zero two five dash zero one two passes. Thanks, Mike, that was great. All of you, feel free to exit at this time, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, we're talking about buying some police cars and some miscellaneous stuff. You can Google us, you can find us online if you wanted to talk further about this. I know Mike is highly responsive too, so, and I really hope you feel, you may not be getting exactly what you want, but at least you were heard in the process, and we will challenge him to keep looking at alternative ways of approaching this. So thank you so much for coming out. If you're leaving, thank you so much for coming out, it was great, and I also wanted to comment on, you were very respectful and professional in your comments, and that, that's important, because then I think it's easier for people to hear what you're saying. So thank you for doing that as well. All right, moving on to resolution two zero two five dash zero one three, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of water meters and radio transmitter, transmitters from Badger Meter Incorporated in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Zazada, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The short of it is this, that some years ago, we started moving from an older school of master meters and radio transmitters to the Badger meters, and most of our meters are now Badger. And the radio transmitters that we have speak to the Badger meters effortlessly, but not to any other meter. So we've been putting aside about eighty thousand dollars for meters generally for replacement, because a certain number will need to be replaced every year, people come and let us know, or their plumbers come and let us know, and we replace them. And the Badger company has proven over time to be very responsive to our needs, but also willing to give us smaller allotments of Badger meters so that we don't spend eighty thousand dollars and then have meters say it's not the usual replacement year, and we have meters sitting on the shelf that we've already paid for. So as, as in the last six years, we're recommending that we stick with Badger and the money that's already in the budget, which is eighty thousand dollars, be, that, that become the cap for any meters over the next year that we'll spend for, this year that we'll spend for such meters.
Questions or comments, council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Sazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Furbick?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed?
Resolution two zero two five dash zero one three passes. Moving on to number six, resolution two zero two five dash zero one four, authorizing the purchase of two vehicles for the DeKalb Police Department from Galena Dodge and various vendors for necessary upfitting equipment, and various vendors for necessary upfitting equipment in the amount not to exceed eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Furbick, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There's seventy, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars allocated for police squad replacements in our current fiscal year, and I want to thank Chief Byrd and Deputy Chief Jason Levertin for doing the homework to come up with a couple of pretty good deals. This resolution and the next one have some price savings for, for the city, which has allowed us to go beyond the four vehicles we thought we could buy to six vehicles. There are, there's some trade-offs and so forth, but I think they're trying to rival the Public Works Department in creative deals. It's, it's to our advantage. In this case, in this particular resolution, we're talking about replacing part of our patrol fleet, which is very important, and the, what's proposed here through the intermediary of, of Galena Dodge is to our advantage, the totals is eighty-seven thousand dollars and some change. Both the Dodge Durango and the Dodge Charger are below market price, and Galena Dodge is basically committing to selling with, including title and documentation fees at or below the state purchase price, which usually is the lowest we can get, so we like it.
Council, comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Furbick?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven-Eyed?
Resolution two zero two five dash zero one four passes. Moving on to number seven, resolution two zero two five dash zero one five, authorizing the purchase of four vehicles for the DeKalb Police Department from Coonis Dodge in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Zazada, City Manager.
So this particular resolution primarily references the need we have in our detective division for replacement vehicles. There's also a vehicle that included in this particular resolution that would replace the, the vehicle currently used by the operations commander. We have a new operations commander, Commander Kwaznuski, and this, this will help him get on the, on the road and stay on the road. Coonis Dodge let us know about a natural occurrence, it was a hailstorm, it, it took out, or at least created damage to four vehicles that they had in transit someplace else. That, that original owner didn't want them, they, they did their repair work, they look like new, they are new, and so what we're looking to do is use them as the nondescript, well, they're going to look new, but they're, they're nondescript cars, so that our detectives, where a little bit of guile is useful, will be able to use them. They're not intended to be patrol vehicles, and then the other vehicle is for Commander Kwaznuski. And the pricing of this, like in the previous item, is far below the market price and also challenges the state purchase price. We, we took advantage of an opportunity that was made known to us by an area dealer, and we, we feel it's a good package and we recommend your approval.
Council, questions, comments? Alderman Perkins?
So these aren't going to look like the ones on Chicago PD then, right?
No. And we're not talking a lot about what they're going to look like, why would we do that?
And they've got Range Rovers and.
Yeah, we're not going to go, here's the detective vehicle, not going to do that, right?
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Larson?
Well, I will say the police department have really good deals here, but I do think the street department has, still wins out for keeping vehicles on the road as long as they do, because these are old vehicles that the police department's turnading in, but for the street department, they were about twice as old, so kudos to both you guys.
Any others? All right, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Furbick?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes. Yes.
Seven Eye?
Resolution two zero two five dash zero one five passes. Number eight, Resolution two zero two five dash zero one six, authorizing a Metronet franchise agreement termination and settlement agreement. Can I have a motion, or can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
So, our City Attorney worked on this with our city staff, and I thank him for what he was able to do. This is a trend, as you read the background, which is not unfamiliar. Metronet has had a franchise agreement with us, it's a ten-year agreement that expires still some years ahead in the spring of two thousand twenty-eight, and as you look at the chart on page thirteen, you can see that the franchise fees we've been earning from that franchise agreement have been going down and going down pretty dramatically. What they would like to do is to terminate the franchise agreement, they are transitioning their customers through their private relationship with them, and noticing and so forth, to their online streaming services. And initially, we thought, well, there are probably, there must be a lot of customers that just don't want to be nudged in that direction, or if they do, they just aren't sure that later on, what seems like a good deal today might be just an opportunity to strike some new fees down the way, as part of a bill, in a monthly bill. But after talking to them and after taking a dive into our own fees, their offer looked more attractive, and I thank Matt for, Matt Rose, for doing a lot of negotiation on this. The settlement agreement that's before you tonight is for just under nineteen thousand. The total that we're estimating could come our way in this year, in twenty-six and twenty-seven, and part of twenty-eight, would be around twenty-two thousand dollars. We worked that, this is not, was not their first offer, we worked it up, so this is where we are right now in the negotiation. I don't think we're going to move this much more. We could just sit on the agreement, but we could also see our, like, for instance, if they complete their negotiations with their customers in the next couple of years, we won't be getting those franchise fees in twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
City Council, questions, comments? Yes, Alderman Perkins?
Little different subject, but same subject matter. Received some feedback from people on whether it's Metronet or Comcast, not really taking care of their cables at the boxes. Can you have any sort of conversation with them, lean on them a little bit, to manage those cables? Basically, a lot of times they're leaving them.
If the City Engineer was here, he could tell you that he is...
Yeah.
Yeah. This is the conversation with the contractor, I think.
Could be, could be. I just, I don't know who it is, but I know the end result is, the cable is laying there, or it's sticking out of the box, or...
Yep.
Had one instance where kids are swinging on the cable, so, and again, I don't know if it's Comcast, or if it's Metronet, or a contractor.
Well, we had some issues with Metronet when they were putting in their system about five, six years ago, and the capital part of the system, running the cables and putting in the boxes and so forth, and we wrestled that at the time, and came out there, and they needed to be, to dress up their act, and we were able, over a period of months, to make that happen. We haven't seen that so many now, though, this sounds like a maintenance issue, and maybe wires hanging and so forth. What we ask people to do, they can call Public Works or our City Engineer, Zach has had a lot to do with the upfront work when they were putting it in the ground, and the Public Works Department can maybe take the complaint or the concern, but people can also file, you know, they get bills, and there are those eight hundred numbers and other numbers that they can call too. So, we would rather be the last, not the last necessarily, but not necessarily the first one either, because that's a service issue, as any other utility, that they should probably get a call from the customer first, so.
We also had a rash of complaints, Frontier was putting in fiber to the home on their poles.
It was a different, yep.
And Metronet, when they originally did this five years ago, followed a non-standard practice, which then the installers were accidentally cutting lines, because they're assuming it's done one way and it was done another way, and a lot of Metronet clients were getting cut because of the contractor from Frontier, but we brought them into City Hall, had a great conversation with Frontier and the contractor, and I hadn't had one complaint since. Now, there might be some previous collateral damage out there, so if new stuff continues to arise, I agree with everything Bill just said.
Also, in the installation, they weren't finishing the repair of the soil and the sod after they were done, maybe they did the right job in installation, but they weren't coming back and seeding, and so people were saying, hey, I know it's a parkway, it's city property, but I mow it, I like it to look nice in front of my nice-looking house, where are these people? And so that was one of the biggest complaints that we had over a period of time, but then that, as the Mayor said, we got on top of that, brought them in, they did better, and these companies often have independent contractors that help put this stuff in, so, you don't know, you get somewhere with one, and then another one comes in, and they work on a Saturday night or a Sunday morning, and, you know, kind of out of sight, out, you know. So, at this point, though, the issue is, is this is a good way, looks like we're going to come to an end of this, either in two thousand twenty-eight or now, we feel it's about as good as we can negotiate right now, if you like it, we'll go with it, if you don't like it, we'll go back and say we're going to run it out.
Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Resolution two zero two five dash zero one six passes. Moving on to Agenda Item K, ordinance's second reading, we have none. So that brings us to ordinance, or Agenda Item L, ordinance's first reading. Number one, ordinance two zero two five dash zero zero four, approving a special use permit at twenty fifty East Lincoln Highway for automobile sales. So, Rio Mendez, I probably pronounced that absolutely wrong, can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sisada, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
I'm going to set this up, and then Mr. Mendez, represented by Yolanda, will, through Yolanda's interpreting skills, be able to have some dialogue if he has some questions. So, Dan Olson has been working on this with some other city staff for a while, I want to thank him for his work. I also want to thank Mr. Mendez for his patience, please tell him. It's just the way it happens, we have ordinances at the end of the agenda. So, you get the idea, you've seen pictures, Mr. Mendez owns property on West, excuse me, on East Lincoln Highway. He would like to sell automobiles at this property, that kind of use requires a special use. This has been through the Planning and Zoning Commission and comes to you with their recommendation. The details of it are laid out in your background, you've read those, you have an idea of what it means, and there are some graphics that are shown here. There was for a long time, kind of a house and compound there, a couple larger garages, nice home. Mr. Mendez intends to convert the home with handicap bathrooms and handicap approaches for, as a sales office, creating new paved space on the site and expanding some paved space, so that there is a limited number anyway of space for automobiles for sale. Some of these will be sold on the internet, others he may come into control of and wants to sell there. There's a, there's pretty stiff limitation on a number of things, including what kind of work would be done on the vehicles, other than just some rigorous detailing of them. If one arrives with a flat tire, we didn't think it was in the city's best interest to say, you can't change the tire, but you can't change, you can't change the engine, we're not doing bodywork, and the rest of that. The conditions also include, in addition to that vehicle display area, there's a parking space for, or there are parking spaces for the employees and also the visitors to the lot. There can't be any outside storage of inoperable vehicles, that vehicle arrives and doesn't have wheels on it, and, you know, no outside storage of other types of equipment, like boats and trailers and RVs. EPA guidelines have to be followed for the storage and disposal of any spent liquids, tires, and so forth. There's an existing well and septic service on the site that can remain until or unless they go foul, and then under the county rules, other arrangements have to be made. The special use permit also will expire within one year of the approval of the ordinance, if the Council chooses to approve this ordinance, unless everything, the paved display area, the parking lot, the drainage basin, the landscaping, the lighting, the sales office, all of that is completed and a final occupancy permit is issued. So if you approve this tonight, the clock starts ticking, it has to be done in a year to encourage our confidence and the intentions here becoming reality. So that's what's before you tonight, the Plan Commission, by a strong vote of five to zero, recommended your approval, and the staff recommends the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
Council, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Ordinance two zero two five dash zero zero four passes on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
So moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Sisada, any comments or questions on that? Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two five dash zero zero four, that means you are good to go, and how about a round of applause for Senior Mendez?
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir, for investing in DeKalb.
Welcome and good luck.
Yeah. All right, then we move on to Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications, Councilmember reports, number one, Alderman Sisada, you want to kick us off?
Just, I'm planning on having a board meeting coming up soon at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, I don't have a date and time yet, but that'll be in the near couple of months.
All right, Alderman Powell?
No report.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Chad Glover and Glenn Robey, they invited me out to, I think it was the first graduating class for the Breakthrough Academy, I know most of those guys, and it was a real pleasure to go to. Something else, I was, sorry, City Manager, but I'm going to need some work out of you, you haven't been too busy, but it was brought to my attention that Corn Fest makes, you know, a substantial amount of money, but they don't reimburse or pay the city anything, and I don't know the numbers, and I'm not even going to act like it, but if there's a way, I would like, if you could, figure that out, and maybe get back with us and find out, you know, what we need to do, if they do make a, you know, great amount, why we can't get reimbursed for that, for, you know, the city services. And my last thing is the tenant and landlord agreement, the Chapter Ten Agreement, is there a way that we can make mandatory that property managers or landlords either make tenants cognizant about how it works and why they should get it, or can we just outright make them, you know, get better insurance? So, I'm not sure, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know how that goes, but...
So, there's been two good questions. First on the Corn Fest, we can come up with some estimated numbers for our overtime services, that's what I assume you're looking for, a little bit of equipment, but not much. On the, I can bring that at the next meeting, if you'd like.
Appreciate it.
Chapter Ten, we've had some discussion at the staff level, at the mayor's, there's an advisory committee that meets once a month, they have talked about it as well, DARA is aware of this particular interest. I would say it's only recently that we've learned of insurance that could be, if it was required, the question always is, what's it going to cost, and will that be a hardship to the tenants? But there is something called Lemonade now, which you can go, you can just type it in, just as it sounds, you can go on the internet, and there's a kind of insurance that kind of grew out of the last couple of years of congressional debate on insurance and healthcare and other things, and I don't want to go into the derivation of it particularly, but I can say that we became very familiar with it after the fire at Trifat, because the rental insurance was a requirement of the, that particular apartment complex owner. Now, whether they kept their insurance up to date or something, that's another thing, that requires monitoring on an annual basis and so forth. But you can buy for five dollars a month, a lower level of insurance, or you could spend fifty dollars a month in a higher level of insurance, and that can cover possessions, also potentially emergency housing and the like. We just have not required, you're absolutely right, we haven't required that in Chapter Ten, but I think it's a good idea to approach the renters, the rental association, and ask them what, with the facts I've just mentioned to you and more, what might be in the community's best interest. We did find that with the fire at Trifat, that there were many social service agencies in the city that came to the call, but we can't do that every time. We have limits on our resources, and also there's, if there is something like the rental insurance that is available and people have invested in it, then that does help us in helping them.
Yeah, hey, I will say, you know, Mayor Barnes and you guys, you did a pretty good job at the last fire that I was at in the first ward, so I definitely want to take my hat off to you guys, you guys were there, stepped it up.
You were there too.
And I appreciate how you guys came through for those people, really.
So, I think, I think this is a good conversation for the Council, we have to get some facts before you, and also it'd be good to know if one of the principal groups, that, the rental association, DARA, that deals with tenants on a daily basis, that, we'd like to hear from them, and we'd also like to hear from the tenants.
Yes, sir.
Would they be willing to pay five bucks or whatever it is, and so we'll have to, I think, though, whereas, even five years ago, when we were revising Chapter Ten, whenever the HRC went through that, and we went through it, there was no such Lemonade out there that I'm aware of. If it was out there, it wasn't well-publicized, and we knew nothing about it. And now it doesn't look like so much as a hardship, it may be, we'll find out after our discussion here, but it may be a very advantageous thing to do.
I think so.
In the meeting, we did meet with a couple of representatives from DARA, just starting that conversation, because we want to, I mean, the DeKalb Area Runners Association's some of the best landlords that we have, they have a high standard, so we want to make sure whatever we do isn't punitive to them, so we want them to be part of that discussion on, what do we think is, what would work in this situation? So, we're going to continue talking about that, and I'll make sure to keep you in the loop whenever I have a conversation about it.
Appreciate it, DARA's great, so yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
All right, Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman Larson?
I had a very rewarding last week, I was at, along with Mayor and City Manager, we were at the police station for the promotion of Sergeant Paul, and he's a homegrown boy, so that's always exciting, because I was like, that name sounds familiar, it's like, went to school with my kid, so that's really cool to see what he's up to, and I knew his firefighter, was it two eighty-four? I forgot to write down the number, but yeah, so that's always in the history of firefighters. And then on Thursday, I got to spend the day off and on at the Police Department, having a soup buffet, and I really got to visit and talk to a lot of the staff and the detectives and the officers, and it was really, really rewarding.
It's great you did that.
Yeah.
For me, like Alderman Larson said, I was at the firefighter swearing in, and the police officer swearing in, so that was always cool, and the two eighty-four, if I recall, every new firefighter gets a badge number that's incremental, so that was the two hundred and eighty-fourth firefighter hired in the history of the city of DeKalb, which was really cool. Did a check presentation over at the Unitarian Church, it was for the, what, Council, which I really appreciate, approved for the new furnace that they put in already, but we promised them the funds, so they did a presentation on that, which was cool, and I got... that, which was cool, and I got to get a tour of the church. I hadn't seen it since Eagles Club back in the day, so few changes from back in then. Then, oh, beyond One Barb, I went to the opening of the new, I don't know what you would exactly call the center, but for students that the school district takes care of all the way to age 23, it was the One Barb Center on Charter that we also approved, rezoning that, in order for them to have a great transition facility. And it is a beautiful, wonderful facility, and the staff are incredible. And then the last thing, went to, was safe passage to the Sycamore Courthouse, and there was a women's rally last weekend. I got to hear Jennifer Yocum. She was the keynote speaker, which was great. She did a wonderful job, and despite it was, what, two degrees out? People were riveted, and no one left, and hung on every word, so thanks for doing that as well.
[inaudible]
Yeah. How about you, City Manager? Anything to report?
7:30. I want to just take two minutes. May I?
This is your report, so yeah.
All right. And I was thinking about this as we were talking about policing on the buses, and how unfortunately, it's the case that people may arrive in our community, maybe they're going to school here, maybe they're doing something else, maybe planting roots, but the experience they had with police officers in some other place was, as you heard tonight, unsettling. And a chill went through my spine when I heard that, because I know otherwise. And I've been asking myself, how do we, how do we continue to talk about what, the distance we've traveled, where our police department is today, as opposed to where it might have been in 2020? And the chief and I talk about this every week. I can tell you, without fear of dispute, that most of the people who serve in our police department weren't here in 2020, most, more than half that means. And we're aiming at 75 by the end of this year. A lot of turnover, and everybody who's come in, and everybody who stayed on after that, people who have been hired and are still with us, have had a new world to adjust to and to embrace, not just to adjust to, but to embrace, which is certain kinds of principles of interaction with the public. A gentleman said today, maybe if you put that money into de-escalation training, that's required. It's not occasionally, it's not every three or four years, it's every year, every officer, and on every shift. I welcome, some of you in the council have been on ride-alongs, I'm sure the chief and his staff would accommodate you anytime you want to do that, or a citizen who wants to do it and see just how we do police. I don't have the presence and the calm in me sometimes to, just to imagine what it might be like. So I am proud of our police force. I believe that it, and I can say this parenthetically, that we did have a pretty serious fight on a bus on one of the first days that they were on a bus two weeks ago. I don't remember now the date, but I remember reading it in the ride-alongs. And I know that when there weren't police on the buses, over the last couple of years, we've had bus drivers assaulted. We've had bus drivers just literally stop the bus because there's so much happening on the bus, and they can't attend to driving safely. And so this is just an experiment, it's a pilot. We're not on every bus, every dime, every shift, but trying to see just if that makes a difference. So I would ask that the public give us the benefit of the doubt. I think we are, I'm sure we are ready to embrace public concerns, not about the police department alone, but about life in DeKalb. And we are growing people who, like all city staff, should be more accepting of those who look a little different, act a little different, and speak a little different. That's the new world, that's the world we're in, and that's what we train on every day. So, I want to, I just wanted to say that because it would have been another occasion where I thought a bad attitude and not a fitting attitude was just sort of allowed. That's what I wanted to say.
Well put. Absolutely. Thank you for that. Moving on to agenda item N, executive session, we have none, which means agenda item O, adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. We are adjourned.